Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, March 5th. I am the county board chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is vice chair Rick Vest and commissioners Matt Schulte, Rome Amundson, and Kristi Yocum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where Christian stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on February 27th, 2024.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Schulte.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to item two, claims. Approval of the claims processed through March 5th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Sorry, Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Schulte.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, that brings us to item three, special presentations. Our first one is the administration of the oath of office to Simon G. Rezak, Lancaster County Clerk of the District Court.
Good morning. Please, let me repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Simon Rezak, do solemn swear.
That you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or for the purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or for the purpose of evasion.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of the Lancaster County District Court Clerk.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of the clerk of district court.
According to law and to the best of your ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization.
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence.
That during such time as I am in this position.
And that during such time as I am in this position.
I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization.
I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. It's God. Thank you, Judge.
Would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank the county board for the opportunity to be the clerk of district court. I'm gonna give it my 110% up there. I've been working up there for over, almost 30 years now, and feel I've got at least a good background on it. And here to serve the public out there, if there's anything that the public needs, free fill to give me a call, I will do the best I can to help you out. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my daughter, and my grand, my daughter Rachel, and my grandson Joshua.
Welcome.
And welcome, my chief deputy Chuck.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to the next item on our special presentations, the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for January 2024 to Leslie Brestle in the category of customer relations. And with that, I'll go ahead and read Leslie's letter into the record. Leslie Brestle, Administrative Services Officer with the County Clerk's Office, has been selected as the Commissioners' Award of Excellence winner for January 2024. Brestle has worked for Lancaster County for five years. She was nominated by Courtney Lyons in the category of customer relations. In her nominations, Lyons states, "In addition to always being an exemplary employee and coworker, there was one instance that stood out for the nomination. It was the Friday before Christmas, and a couple had arrived at our office after we had closed to apply for a marriage license. Leslie chose to help out the couple by reopening the office and completing their application so they could receive their license by their wedding that was taking place over the weekend. As she was assisting that couple, another couple came in needing a marriage license. This couple was clearly on their way to their wedding and had failed to apply for a license beforehand. Leslie took it all in stride and helped the couple out by completing their license as well. The entire scene was something like out of a sitcom, a barking chihuahua, a pregnant woman in a wedding dress, an officiant in the bride's family, all on the Friday before the long Christmas weekend, as the evening cleaning crew was working around her. Leslie was calm, helpful, and positive, and the entire time, and even though it was almost an hour after her shift had ended, both couples thanked Leslie profusely, and I'm sure it's not something that either will forget. It was a perfect example of her amazing attitude and focus in providing great service to county residents. In addition to helping out with marriage license, Leslie is in charge of all property assessment protests in our office, a huge undertaking, especially this past summer. She handles all interactions with the public with patience and positivity. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Brestle with the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of January 2024."
Courtney Lyons, Deputy County Clerk. And yeah, everything that we said is true of Leslie. You guys know the work that she puts into her position. She does so much, everyone in our office does so much behind the scenes that don't even really get in front of people, so it's great that we get to recognize her today. The one thing about Leslie that stands out is she just never gets her feathers ruffled. She's just always calm. She is in charge of all the property protests, and so as you all know, it's a lot coming at you all summer, frustration coming at you, and she just never, she just always is calm and positive and happy. She'll, she's our point person for all the referees. She schedules all the hearings with the referees for people. She'll take her computer home and schedule hearings during that crunch time in June and July, and she just never lets it bother her. She's always positive. So I'm so thankful for her. This past year, she's also done the work of training me as I'm new, and so she's definitely been that consistent string between administrations of the success of our office, and she's a really good teacher, so I'm very thankful for her.
Matt Hanson, Lancaster County Clerk, and I just have to echo everything Courtney said. There were kind of unlimited number of things we could have nominated Leslie for. I'm really glad Courtney chose this opportunity, because it's such, such a unique situation, to really highlight Leslie's attitude and importance to our office and importance to the county. So I'm really glad the commissioners have selected her, and I want to ask you to offer my congratulations as well.
Leslie, it's my pleasure to present this to you. It didn't surprise me at all that you were unflappable throughout this situation. I did appreciate reading the story, because that's how I always see you as well. No matter what's thrown at you, well, you just deal with it, and generally with a smile on your face, so we can't even tell what's happening underneath. But it did surprise me, as I read the story, that you've only been with us for five years, because I think your depth of knowledge is tremendous, and your support is huge, and we wouldn't be able to hold these meetings without your support, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I just want to take just a moment to say thank you to all of you, to Courtney and Matt, to my little cheering section back there. It's definitely a team that we have going, and very much appreciated, and I will say that it's nothing that anybody else wouldn't have done in the same situation, but very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, don't, don't walk away. This is our opportunity.
Well, I'd just say that when Courtney said unflappable, that struck a chord, because we've certainly given you plenty of opportunities to be flappable, but you've never done that, so I can certainly see you handling a situation where something very important to these citizens came before you, and you had your own life in front of you with a big weekend, and yet you made sure their needs were taken care of, and so really consistent with the character you demonstrate in front of us every Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your service.
Yeah, your professionalism dealing with people, with the citizens, is remarkable, and we certainly appreciate that. You are a very good representative of the county.
I would ditto everything that was said and add that I really appreciate your smile and your cheery attitude every Thursday morning when you walk in, so.
It's, it's a real pleasure to work alongside you, Leslie. Thank you for being one of the faces of Lancaster County, and just thank you for being a member of our team.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to item 3C, our last special presentation, recognition of Jim Chata, Veteran Service Committee, for his years of service to Lancaster County.
Mr. Clerk, is there a proclamation?
Yes. I'm making sure I have the right copy. I do have a proclamation that I'd be happy to read into the record. Before the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, in the matter proclaiming March 5th, 2024, as Jim Chata Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, whereas Jim Chata has been a steadfast advocate for veterans in Lancaster County since 1995, including decades of service as the Chair of Veteran Service Committee, and whereas Jim's leadership has played a pivotal role in establishing the operation Lancaster County Veterans Court, demonstrating his commitment to justice and veterans' well-being, and whereas Jim's distinguished U.S. Army service in Vietnam, where he achieved the rank of Staff Sergeant and received the Purple Heart, reflects his bravery and dedication to our nation, and whereas Jim was appointed by the governor to serve on the Veterans Advisory Commission and as President of the State's Veteran Home Board, ensuring responsible oversight of Nebraskan's veterans' affairs, and whereas Jim's extensive involvement in various committees and organizations underscores his tireless efforts in supporting and advocating for veterans, now therefore, in special recognition for Jim Chata's exceptional service, unwavering commitment, and invaluable contributions to the veterans' community, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska proclaim March 5th, 2024, as Jim Chata Day by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Thank you very much. Very nice, yes.
Yes. I, I just, I've known you for so many years.
Many, many.
Yeah, many, many.
Yes.
And you know, the Board of Commissioners would like to present you with this clock. I don't know if you've ever kept track of time or anything like this, but you know, you have served for 29 years in this particular role, and there's been so many other things that you have done, you know, with your legal background, with your recognition, you know, the different things that you've done within the community. You have been just a staunch supporter of the veterans.
Thank you very much.
And so we really appreciate that. And as one veteran to another, let me salute you.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. I don't salute many people very often anymore, you know, but in general, I'm pretty impressed with, you know.
Serve it.
Thank you very much for this. I, I'm not gonna keep much more track of time for much longer, I guess. Trying to back off, just briefly, though, on July 9th, 1969, myself and a group of people I was with were ambushed by the Vietnamese, and I lost a lot of friends that day, and it's still, it's still a day I remember every day, and it's really, really difficult, so. And when I came back, I suffered from PTSD for quite a while, and it took a while before I could even face what was going on. So now, and after coming out of that, actually, the movie Platoon did a lot of that for me. I watched it over and over again, went with a really good friend of mine, and we actually drank a little bit of rum while we were watching that movie.
Just a moment.
Long time ago, but over the years, I finally got around to it so I could try to help other people who had similar problems and issues like that, and I've had great support from Lancaster County, great support from the city of Lincoln, great support from the state of Nebraska to get that done, in many, many ways, and so I, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to get that accomplished, and I know it'll carry on. Recently had a, when I was this, I was civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army for four years, and during that time, I suffered a traumatic brain injury flying out to Kearney to welcome some people who were coming back from the east, the far east. Anyway, I've then since been to doctors, quite a few of them, who said, "I just gotta get out of this stuff and let my brain heal," and so that's what I'm doing. I wouldn't leave this if I, if I didn't have many doctors telling me to stop, so I really appreciate it. I'm very pleased with my clock, and I will thank you very much for a long, 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 positive time. Thanks for your help. Bye-bye.
Just the opportunity to thank you, Jim, I don't want to let it pass by. You've honored those you've served with by the way you've carried yourself through these many years since that day, and by serving so many fellow veterans. Lincoln and Lancaster County is a much better place for veterans because of your efforts.
I appreciate that.
And it's been an honor to play a small part in assisting you in doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Rick. Appreciate it.
You've done yeoman's service for our community.
Thanks, Sean.
On so many levels.
Yeah, the advocacy that you've done for veterans, and just to raise awareness of the challenges that veterans face, is a tremendous legacy, and has really served the county well.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate you sharing your personal story. That's not a story that we, people, my generation younger, don't get to hear very often, and so thank you for sharing that, and thank you for your service.
It's, it's the one I live with every day.
I imagine.
Never goes away. Thanks.
And I did fail to say one thing. Okay.
Pardon?
I did fail to say one thing when I was up there, you know.
Sure.
And you know, you have served the country, you have served the state, and you have served the county, all of these different things. You have encompassed all of your service into any, every one of these, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, the nation.
Right, well, you know, part of the deal, I have a hard time saying no, so I've learned how to say no.
Turns out we've got a vacancy on a board.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, appreciate that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to item four. Item four, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items with the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-23-0233 with Marcus Hall to provide stop class instruction, C-20-0734 with No Wait Inside LLC for software to be used by the public while obtaining services at the county treasurer's office, C-23-0106 with American Fence of Lincoln, C-23-0105 with Empire Fence and Netting, and C-23-0107 with Salt Valley Fence Company LLC to provide unit fence, unit price fencing services, C-21-0230 with Your Next Tire for annual inspection and service of vehicle lifts, C-23-0050 with Judson Irrigation Incorporated for the unit price irrigation, maintenance, and repair services, C-23-0103 with World Class Office Installers, and C-23-0102 with Select Van and Storage Incorporated to provide unit price moving services, B, right away contracts with the following, Melinda Buell Revocable Trust, City of Hickman to Martel Road, in the amount of $49,921, and Bruce C. Cooster Revocable Trust, South 68th Street, City of Hickman to Martel Road, in the amount of $50,021, and finally, change order one to county contract C-23-0949 with Midwest Infrastructure Incorporated for the replacement of county bridge X129.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries. Excuse me, pardon me. That brings us to item five, unfinished business, 5A, the resolution in the matter of special permit 23042 for personal wireless facilities to allow a 239-foot self-support tower on property generally located at 7459 West Roca Road.
Okay, before we get started into discussions, I just want to refresh where we're at. There is a motion and a second before us. Yep. County Attorney's, yep, County Attorney's Office will walk us through it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, that's correct, Commissioner Flowerday. There was, at the last meeting, there was, I believe, a motion and a second to deny the appeal, was the wording at the time, and then there was subsequent to that, there was a motion to postpone to this meeting.
Right, and then Commissioner Schulte, I believe you made that motion, right?
Yep.
Based on your comments in, in that meeting, did you, did you mean to deny the appeal? I've messed this up a million times.
Yes.
So, just to add, denying the appeal would in effect be approving the permit because the appeal was...
Oh, no, denying the permit is what I had intended to do.
Right, you want to uphold the appeal. That's what I'm, that's why I'm saying this. I'm like, I didn't think that's where you were at, but it, so be it, so.
Correct, yes. I meant to deny the permit, which would be to uphold the appeal. Thanks for clarifying that, Mr. Chairman.
So what, do we need to try to amend the motion? Do we need to, what do we, what do you recommend?
Well, can I ask, Mr. Clerk, who provided the second for the motion to deny the appeal?
Commissioner Amundson did.
Commissioner Amundson.
Commissioner Schulte, if you would offer that amendment, and Commissioner Amundson, if you would keep your second, I would say that that could go forward.
I would offer that amendment.
And I would second that.
Okay, so there is a, so there is a motion before us to uphold the appeal, which would then in, in effect deny the permit, so.
Can I ask just one, sorry, you finish.
So we are now to the point where a vote of yes will mean no cell tower, and a vote of no will mean the tower can continue. This is, I love when we get into the no means yes moments. We're, we're great at this.
That is my impression as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one other clarifying point? So, are rules also state that when an item is read, the public can make, have five minutes to make a comment? I see people in the audience, I'm not assuming they all want to make a comment, but is that still, we're still gonna recognize that? Okay.
I'm not, I'm not looking to shut anybody down.
Okay.
I mean, I, is there more to talk about?
No, that's it. I just wanted to make sure that we, and part of my thing was trying to educate the audience, say, "This is not a public hearing anymore. This is a public comment with five-minute time limit. If anybody wants to speak, now's your chance." And I would also maybe just add to that, one other difference between a public hearing and a public comment is that generally, our rules are that we don't respond or ask, we don't respond to public comment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would just say, it, help us out, try to keep it to new information if you can.
Sure, yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Meyer with Law from Hush Blackwell, 14606 Branch Street, Omaha, Nebraska. For clarification purposes, we're here on behalf of the applicant. We are for the approval of the permit, opposing the denial of the appeal, wait, opposing the upholding of the appeal. Make sure I wanna get that right.
No.
Just, just quickly, I think it's important, there was some confusion during our last meeting, I just want to clarify that real quick. And just big picture, the applicant is seeking to invest money to improve the infrastructure for rural telecommunications services in Lancaster County. When the staff went through, it determined that the, the installation of this tower would be consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan. It met the goals of that plan, and our applicant, when deciding to submit the application, went through a thorough review of the zoning regulations, determined that this was an appropriate site. Now, with respect to the specific site, there was some distances thrown around at the last meeting, I just want to clarify. The proposed tower is going to be .8 miles away from the existing tower. Under the zoning regulations, anything within a .5 radius, there has to be a showing that co-located... co-location is not appropriate. That provision doesn't apply because we're .8 miles away. As far as the location, this is an ideal location. I think we discussed this, I'll keep it very brief. The topography of the site allows for the most efficient use of the telecommunications infrastructure, which again goes consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan. And just finally, I just want to point out that Mr. Seek, who is a property owner in Lancaster County, he wants to lease out his property. He owns property in Lancaster County. His family has owned property for, I think he said, almost 100 years. He pays property taxes. He should have the right to use the property how he sees fit, as long as it's legally permissible. The staff department has determined that this is a legally permissible use of the property. So we ask that the permit be approved and the appeal be denied. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this? I need to ask if... I think so.
It's helpful for the record. Thank you.
I'd like to weigh in on the issue and say that I am in support of the landowners living in the vicinity of the, of the proposed tower. 24-year-old technology standards are no standards at all. And the landowner, the tower is going to have an effect upon the local occupants of the land. And the landowner doesn't live on the land, so he's not affected by the problems associated with this type of service. So, health standards including, or health effects including. So I just wanted to weigh in, in support of my friends.
Hello, I'm Charlene Seek and I'm a neighboring person. I did not come prepared because we had called in and they said that we were not to make any further comments. So I just wanted to remind you that I am opposed of it. And I understand due to federal government mandates and issues that health concerns are not your concern, but it is my concern. And I just want you to know that they're real and out there. And I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us. And do I need to sign this?
It'd be helpful.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else looking to speak on this item?
Good morning. I too didn't realize that we could testify, so I'll just make a few comments that I can, that I can remember. And thank you again. One thing that came up was this coverage at Blue Stem Lake. Personally, I've never heard of problems there. And at our, at the Board of Commissioners, or the Lancaster County, see your name is right, someone said that we couldn't have, shouldn't have cell towers at a lake. But actually, that's exactly where it should be if there, if there is not coverage. Now personally, I know of no one that's not been able to, to get coverage at the lake. And Krista, you mentioned, were you at Blue Stem Lake?
I did mention it, and I was at Blue Stem Lake. However, I think I said, and I want to clarify, it was a few years ago.
Okay.
So I don't know what it's like today.
Yes, okay. And I guess there's extenuating circumstances for cell tower coverage even from buildings. I think a development person mentioned that. So with that being said, it is a concern, but I'm not sure that a cell tower at 72nd is, is really the answer. I mean, that's a major concern of health or safety. And I know you're not going to change that. And I think my daughter said even at Mahoney State Park, there wasn't coverage. Now probably different areas. So that's kind of an aside. And I think that is a big concern, but I'm not sure it's an accurate concern. And also, excuse me, my voice gives me away. There is another tower, Char was saying when she got up on the, there are a lot of towers in that, in, all over that I wasn't even aware of. And there is one at Highway 77 and West Bray Road, which Char, Charlene Seek, I'm sorry, not Charlene, yeah, Charlene, said. And I wondered, is there overlapping coverage? I really have never seen a map of if there might be coverage. Also, also back to that 911, I guess, I guess 911 will accept calls from any carrier, so I'm not sure if that's a supposedly that, and maybe you know that 911 will, you know, accept calls from any carrier. So if that was a big concern, I think it's maybe not a valid complaint. And I just say, you know, the boxes are checked, but I'm not sure that that's still the right decision. So that's my opinion. But as the attorney said, a person has a right to do what they want with their land. And I don't, there's a lot of fine lines here, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak on this item?
I'm Hugh Seek. I'm the landowner. 30 years ago, I just got out of college. My father came to me and said, "Hugh, there's going to be an auction on a farm in the same section as our family farm." Says, "I want you to go to the auction and we're going to buy that farm." Well, at about 25 years old, I wasn't very making very much money. I had a new position at an architectural firm here in Lincoln, and I bought that farm. For the next 15 years, every dime I made went into paying off that farm. While my friends were buying new pickups, boats, having a lot of fun, I'm buying a farm. So I have used that farm for recreational purposes. I've been a good steward of the land, a good neighbor, and they could attest, I haven't had it in hard farm production. It has been in pasture, it has been in CRP. They're currently cutting hay on the farm. And the amount of income I'm getting off of the farm is not what it could be. Yes, when I was approached to put up a tower on the farm, and they said, "Hey, this will help out, coverage of Blue Stem Lake and to the east," I said, "Okay." It will also help pay property taxes, to which they'd pointed out. I've been in the tax role for 30 years on my farm, for over 100 years on farms other in the, in that section. I guess the point is, is this tower meets all criteria of the county. It meet, you know, the, the health concerns, I understand that. There are people who are opposed to this, who have a company that is based off a cell service. And I find it kind of hypocritical for them to say they don't like this technology when that's what their own business is based on. However, I guess it is the fact that this is not a matter of whether it, it meets it or it's not allowed, it's just a sort of a matter of, hey, we don't like it. And I guess 30 years ago, I didn't know I was buying a piece of property that is not really mine. And that's all I have to say.
Any other further comments? Okay, we will get back to the motion then. So there is a motion and a second to uphold the appeal. So a vote for this means no tower. A vote against it means that the, it's still before us and that we would have to approve it. Any further discussion?
Say that one more time.
Right? No, no means yes.
A vote for Commissioner Schulte's motion.
Means no tower.
Means, so, okay, if I vote yes, I'm saying no tower.
Okay, I think I got it. Any further discussion? I love when we do this to ourselves, when we flip, when we flip the thing. Okay, hearing no further discussion. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Amundson?
No. I, I had thought about this for a long period of time. And maybe I should have said this in the discussion time. But the reticular, what is it called? The reticular assessing system that you have in your mind when you start noticing things? Where we live, I did notice that there are quite a few cell towers. And I don't even really, I didn't even really notice them until I started noticing them. Okay? And I do agree that the property owner does have certain rights. It does meet the regulations of the zoning, and it does meet also the comprehensive plan. So I will vote no on this.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
I also am voting no. I do, I did review all of this through this last week, and I did appreciate some very thoughtful emails from the neighbors in the area. But, but this does conform to our long-term plan, and it's been through a vetting process through the planning department. So I also am voting no.
Vest?
No.
Flowerday?
No. I'm more than happy to look at the text amendment, but I think we, the applicant has met the standards that we currently have.
Motion fails.
Okay, now...
Now we need, if we want to approve the tower, we need a, right? We need a motion to approve the permit?
Yes, that's right. Which would be in effect a motion to deny the appeal.
Okay, we're doing it again.
Yeah, we're doing it again.
Okay. So I will make a motion to deny the appeal with the understanding that that means we will approve the permit. And let me take one minute to explain. Last week, I, it's very important to me that everyone who comes before us is treated with respect and dignity, and their concerns are heard and understood by myself as a commissioner. And I know the other commissioners work hard at it as well. So when I have a lot of information like that floating around, I need to weight it accordingly because everybody has valid points that they bring before us. Everybody has points that they believe in and that are important to them. But sometimes we have to make decisions where one side gets approval and one side doesn't get approval. And that's what we're facing here today. So I thank Commissioner Schulte for allowing me a week to consider all this. When I weighed it all out, and with all respect to those who came and testified about not putting the tower in this location, I ended up with the thoughts that we, as a board, have respected the rights of property owners throughout my duration, my service on this board. We, we value that, and we have a company here that understands this business. Verizon knows what they're doing. I'm confident they don't place towers just to build towers. They understand the needs of their customers and their business, and they're putting this tower in the location that best meets the needs of both entities. As far as the zoning standards go, always open, they're always open to constructive criticism. I would just say that we went through it a number of times in my first term. You never hit perfect standards. But businesses need consistent standards that they can know and look at and understand how they are expected to operate in our community. And that's what we have currently. If we need to revise them, let's certainly do that, but that's not the issue before us today. So, long-winded speech, but I am moving to deny the appeal with the understanding that it also approves the application.
And for those same reasons, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess I'd just add a couple of comments and say, I really appreciate the, the, the chance as well to step back. One of the things I, was brought to my attention is that in the, there is a rule that lays out where these sec, where these towers are supposed to be constructed. And the first priority is actually on publicly owned sites. Then it's on, there's four different things that are listed, and this, this layout is actually the last lowest priority. I would, I would have appreciated if the planning committee or the applicant had shown that they had gone through to look for those other sites previously as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to continue to, continue to deny the...
The only thing that I would like to say too is, is that, you know, the, the requirements, the permit regulations indicate five tenths of a mile, and this is at eight tenths of a mile. It seems like to me it's really splitting hairs. But actually, having been a signal officer in the military, I do understand that having a higher tower on a higher level of land, that does really improve the communication. And so it meets all the requirements and everything, and so that is why I have decided to support the tower.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll on the motion to deny the appeal.
Yocum?
Saying yes means we are allowing the tower. I just want to verify.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
No.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries? Commissioners, that brings us to item six, new business. Item 6A, a resolution in the matter of approving the official bond of Simon G. Rezak, Lancaster County Clerk of the District Court.
Move approval.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries? 6B, a resolution instituting eminent domain proceedings against Prior Pine LLC.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. This is a piece of ground that we have previously discussed. It is the last remaining parcel on the 98th Street project between Adams and Holdridge. We have exhausted all other opportunities, and we need to take this one for, for eminent domain.
Good move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
So let's, do we need motion before we can talk?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. So eminent domain, it's a big deal. And let's talk about the efforts of your department, because this is an important project. Let's start with this. 98th Street. This is along North 98th Street, correct, Pam?
That is correct, Commissioner Vest.
And we're attempting to pave this because we have received, over the years, we have received numerous requests to pave this road. It's important to the citizens that live there that we pave this. That's what these efforts are geared towards. We have one individual who, all the other people have signed off in agreement with what the work we need to do to go forward with paving. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so we have one individual who has not. And this is what you have briefed us on. Could you just tell us about all the steps your department took to try and reach an agreement before we got to this point this morning?
I don't have the complete right-of-way file with me this morning, but I can tell you that we have been reaching out and negotiating with this individual for a very long period of time. And as the board is aware, this was a project we had really hoped to construct last year. And we got, of course, surprised by the new BAT rules for, for trees, and that we were not able to remove the trees after April 1st. And so we have been working on this project to get it across the finish line since then, and this is the last remaining piece of ground.
Good morning, commissioners. If I could just add to that, John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office, 605 South 10th Street. The, the resolution here that's prepared for the board is 77 pages, and I believe a summary of the contacts with the landowner begin on, wait. It's, it's around page 20 or so. But there are significant contacts, and that, that is a requirement if, if we were to file in county court for this eminent domain procedure. That's also a requirement there that, that the engineering department, that the county make reasonable attempts to settle with the landowner. And I have worked with Mr. Olson, the right-of-way agent for the Lancaster County Engineering Department, and he has, I've been on those emails. And he has, I've been on those emails, he has made numerous attempts to contact the landowner and achieve a settlement and that's just not been successful.
Yeah, thank you for that information because I was going to say that even if, if Engineer Dingman couldn't recite that today, we have been briefed all along as you've been trying...
It turns out I don't keep 77 pages of information in my head.
But there's the information for the public. But I also wanted to point out that it's beyond just that we've heard this from neighbors, that they, that they need this paved. There's been traffic studies and that sort of thing that indicate the amount of traffic that's there. It warrants being paved, right?
This road warrants being paved. And you may recall in one in six hearings in the past, we've had a number of residents here that have wanted this road to be paved. And so we've brought this road forward for pavement. At this time, it, it's probably in the top three miles in Lancaster County that have the most cars on them. The dust on this road makes it difficult for residents that live in this area and also creates safety hazards. And again, this is a, this is not only a non-paved road, but it is a non-graded road. So it has never been graded for a modern travel.
I'd just make a comment and say I've, the landowner has contacted me directly. I've talked to the engineer about that and I know he has some concerns about engineering and I, that's nothing I can lean in on and understand. But I do, I have reviewed the contacts that have been made and chatted at length with the engineer in her office about it. And I just, it's never fun to end up here. I'm going to vote in support of it because I do feel like the right work has been done to appropriately notify an attempt to negotiate.
And that's, and I think that's the conclusion Pam has made in her department, not just her, but a lot of whoever's working in this department. The list is substantial of contacts and go back and forth. And my understanding is, as Commissioner Yocum said, we've been briefed on this numerous times. So my understanding is we have done all that's possible to accommodate this individual while we're trying to achieve a project that's going to help a whole lot of citizens in our community. And so I think we take this step with great, great reluctance, but on the other hand, if this project's going to go forward, we need to make a decision. So I think that's all I need to say.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries?
I would say congratulations Pam on this project because it's been a subject of discussion many times for us. So it's good to have it going forward.
Mr. Clerk, please continue.
Item six C, an agreement with Gana Trucking to provide road maintenance while conducting excavation of soil, sand, and gravel on property located east of 7600 North 70th Street.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Hawley with the County Engineers' Office. Our office has reviewed this maintenance agreement and has no issues with it.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Six D, a special designated license application from Siostres Temple Holding Corporation for an outside event on April 13th, 2024.
Anyone here to speak on this?
I'd move approval of the application.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess I would just point out that it looks like all the paperwork's in line, the sheriff, engineer all sign off on it. So the planning department's okay with it.
No, it's good. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Six E, a recommendation from County Corrections Director to award and execute a sole source contract to Accurate Controls Incorporated for upgrading existing CCTV by replacing cameras on onsite programming and engineering in the amount of $392,967.50.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Okay.
No, okay.
I, no, I don't think so.
Okay, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item six F, a mini grant contract application with the Nebraska Department of Transportation, the amount to $7,035 for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office to participate in the You Drive, You Text, You Pay mobilization to help reduce the number of distracted drivers and distracted driving crashes.
Ben Houchen from Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. Like you already know, we do a lot of these throughout the year and it's just the saturation patrol and that we get reimbursed from the state for the overtime we spend.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Any comments on distracted drivers? Ben, I mean, it's something that I easily fall, I have to fight to stay focused on where I am is what I'm trying to say here. And just another effort to reinforce that.
Yeah, as you know, it's a secondary offense to be on your phone at this point in time in our state. That's a whole different subject, but again, it's a nationwide grant that just trying to keep people alive. And as you probably know, sometimes people on their phones and doing things are as bad as being under the influence of alcohol or drugs. So this is a good program for us and just helps remind the public that I don't know very many people that can get a text or need to do a phone call that it's so important you can't wait until you get to where you're going and stop just to be safe.
I reminded myself of that this morning on the way down here.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Five zero. Brings us to six G, a request for reimbursement to the United States Marshal Service on behalf of the County Sheriff for expected overtime in connection with Operation Lifetime Lincoln Compliance Enforcement to ensure proper registration of Lancaster County sex offenders. The reimbursement amount is $13,600.
Again, Ben Houchen from the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. We had this grant last year and to be honest, we were way too successful and made way too many arrests on this. And as time has gone on, the enforcement of the sex registration and doing some enforcement on it has declined. And we found that out when we did this grant. Hopefully we're not as successful this upcoming one, but I think it's a very good project to do. Our Fugitive Task Force does that with the U.S. Marshals and like I said, it was very, too successful last time and I'm, hopefully that individuals who have to do the registration are keeping up on it now.
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Five zero. Brings us to six H, a professional services contract with Eleanor Creative to implement a limited hiring campaign for the youth services center. The cost of the county is $5,500 for services plus reimbursable expenses for advertising not to exceed $2,000.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
We've had great success with Eleanor Creative at the county jail in upping staffing numbers and I look forward to that happening at the youth services center as well.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Brings us to six I, an agreement with Black Hills Information Security LLC for identification and support regarding information security-related vulnerabilities. The cost of the county is $6,700.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Brings us to six J. FEMA acknowledgment of receipt of flood insurance policies for the following properties, 500 West O Street, 443 Cherry Creek Road, Building C, and 444 Cherry Creek Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Of course, I support FEMA insurance for our buildings. I just want to remind the Commissioners that 444 Cherry Creek Road and 443 Cherry Creek Road, Building C, that is the shop, the gas pumps, our cold storage building, our main office building are all currently eh, a couple tents, a couple tents out of the floodplain as it currently exists. As the city of Lincoln is revising these floodplains, I would expect that these structures will be in the floodplain. I'll remind the Commissioners, because not all of you were here then, that in 2015, we actually did backwater up all the way into the parking lot of this building. And so this continues to be a resiliency issue for us and I'd just like to use this as an opportunity to draw your attention to that.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerdick?
Yes.
Motion carries? Brings us to item seven, the legislative update.
I don't have anything. I did have a Naco call yesterday related to 1067 and I would be glad to discuss that, the tenor of that call with any of the Commissioners if, if you'd like to hear it.
1067 just helped me know it.
Inherited tax.
Thanks.
Okay. We have nothing else? Can move on to public comment?
Item eight, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
If only voting rights were on par with land rights. The right to secure, transparent, and verifiable elections is everything. Some interesting headlines out about ESNS recently. Their secret corrupt election fraud practices will come back to bite them in the butt this year. And when they do, they will come back to bite all of you and our SOS office. That was not part of my little spiel here. Language is everything. The perversion of language is the perversion of thought. That is to say, it undermines our ability to think correctly. See the definition of Orwellian newspeak. It has been claimed that our democracy is under threat. Our democracy is not under threat. We do not have a democracy. Democracy is mob rule. We are a constitutional republic governed first and foremost by the people's constitutions. The people stand at the top with their constitutions and choose their representatives. The idea that the people of Nebraska are the second house is the most idiotic, nonsensical idea ever. The people stand at the top. Free speech is not a threat to a constitutional republic. This nation was founded upon, quote, "a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." That comes from a SCOTUS decision in 1964. Free speech is only a threat to corruption and to subversers of the people's constitutions. The real threat is a government that thinks it can undermine the people's consent by which we choose our representatives. A government that thinks it can take our votes to a black box in a back room and count them in secret is the height of arrogance and the furthest thing from integrity in election management. It is an obvious conflict of interest for government to count votes. Government wants to stay in power. Government can be bribed. Government can be blackmailed. A bribed mom can do very little damage, but a bribed and/or self-serving SOS office can do lots of damage. A government that is not duly elected is not a legitimate government. It is a government in name only. When a government becomes pompous and emboldened to trample upon the inherent and inalienable rights of we the people, like they did during COVID, we know it is not a duly elected government. What do we see coming from our so-called government today? Tyranny. Our government, government has not only utterly failed us, it has done exactly what our founders predicted it would do. It has corrupted itself, sold itself to corporate, sold its soul to corporations, special interests, and the love of money instead of giving itself to honest service to the people. Our elected franchise is presently ground zero in a war between we the people and a rogue government that refuses to administer fair and open elections free from outside influence, under the people's watchful eyes. That is to say, with transparency, veracity, and verifiability. Aside from the secrecy of casting votes, everything else in the voting process should be absolutely transparent and verifiable. If anyone is opposed to that idea, it is a sure sign they are traitor and we should call them such. What our SOS and legislature, legislature call elections, quote unquote, are not in fact elections. By doing so, they are waging a psychological war, a propaganda war, a lawfare, lawfare war against we the people. Here's a, if the overthrow of one's legitimate government is treason, then the overthrow of the people's consent by which legitimate government is supposed to be instituted is also treason. Such is the crime presently being committed by our SOS office and members of our legislature. When members of government call us a threat for simply speaking, we know they are playing mind games. The primary purveyors of misinformation, disinformation, and malinformation in the state of Nebraska are the occupiers of the SOS office, namely, Bennet and Evnan.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Those are the laws that apply to our elections here in this state. Starts out with the Constitution and then it'll get into Nebraska statutes. I'm writing to you to inform you that the people of Nebraska no longer believe in their vote. Mostly I talk to really don't like politics. Most do not like what our nation has turned into. When asked if they will vote in the upcoming election, most look down to the ground because they feel like it's their civic duty and they really feel ashamed to say no. So they say, what good does it do? They'll put in who they want to anyway. These people that pull the strings of our presidents, senators, governors, attorney generals, all the way down to the sheriffs, county clerks, and county commissioners are ordered by their big daddy to pass this and cancel that, which has moved our society from civil law in order with morals and standards set by the Creator so we can have a life that is protected by our constitutions and a government that answers to the people. But that last long sentence no longer exists. The Constitution is not enforced. The government does not answer to the people. In fact, the people are afraid of their government. The people are not represented by their government. This is while you're receiving this letter. Every county election clerk in Nebraska will get this from me, and they want your answer, yes or no, at the very end. If you're not going to work for the people, you're done. I want you to know that I do not stand with Democrats or Republicans. They are both owned by the same people, and all it is, is a dog and pony show. I call it the uniparty. They want you to think they're on their side, and they're not. Laws are enforced on the peasants, or maybe serfs would be a more proper term. The representatives and those called to represent the oligarchs, you know, the billionaires? When Hillary Clinton was talking about the democracy, you didn't even enter her mind. Democracy is what these rulers decide. Do you really think they care who, what, why, or where you are at? Okay, this here's the page that shows you the Nebraska statute of why our governments are corrupted. They're not following Section 32-1201. They want so much more control over you. They want you to have an electric car, electric furnace, electric stove, electric water heater, electric, 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 so they can turn you off. That's what they really think of you. I could go into child trafficking, which is the real reason the border and the lawless people in DC keep it that way. We have a hunger for our children that cannot be satiated, so I must move on. These are the laws that are being broken. Our constitution is being violated. Please read them. Okay, to conclude. If you don't understand all these laws, take them home. Have your husband or wife read them. This is serious stuff. My nation has been stolen from me, and I want it back. When a black box takes away who I voted for, none of us live in a free state. One-day voting, no mail-in ballots. This is how they inserted 20 million ballots, but it takes time. Cheating takes time. They have to know how many more ballots to print. Government issued ID, no schools or universities. Hand count at the precinct under video, and you're done. Now we don't, now we know the results by midnight, not three weeks later. If you guys at the county level don't take back our elections, we will have lost our county and nation forever. Pronouns, hate speech, remove God mandates, force injections, children mutilated, laws that allow sex at any age, pedophilia, and censure of speech at all levels. I didn't vote for you.
That's fine, it's still your time. Anybody else wishing to speak? Saying none, please continue.
Announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, March 7th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live at LNK TV. LNK TV is available on Allo Channel 2, Inspection Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Last item I have is adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flourde?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we will now begin the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, March 5th. Mr. Clerk?
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written material of discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us in one minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, February 27th, 2024.
I move approval of those minutes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flourde?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flourde?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is our public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption application for Grace Chapel.
We will now open the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption application for Grace Chapel. Is anyone wishing to speak on this item? Any members of the public wishing to speak? Saying none, we'll close the public hearing.
Item four is action on the following, the motor vehicle tax exemption application.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flourde?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item I have on the agenda is reserved for an executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation and legal advice and to protect the public interest at 10:15 a.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flourde?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, it's now 10:15 a.m., and we are in executive session.
Yes.
Schultz?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are done with executive session. Commissar Scherzmann?
We adjourn.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on items not related to the agenda for Board of Equalization? Seeing none.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Board of Equalization. Is there any discussion? Please call them. Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yep.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.